All right, I want to welcome everybody out to tonight's Town Board Forum. Get everybody coming out tonight. What we're gonna do is ask a series of questions. Each candidate has two minutes to answer the question. First, we're gonna open up with statements, opening statements from each candidate as to why they're running. And then, very end of this, we'll have a closing statement. And I want each candidate, so we'll go down the line here, we'll pass the mic. Each candidate will state their name in the beginning, and then, while they're running.
Hello? Hi, my name's Angela Moore. I'm running for councilmember because I am a strong believer in lowering our taxes and preventing our spending from being on things that are unnecessary or inequitable, and having open government and equal enforcement of the law, whether you're a longtime local or new citizen. I want to see the law enforced equal across the board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara McRae, and I have been on the town council for the last four years. Can you hear it? You can't...
It's directed.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've been on the town council for the last four years, and all it's done is whet my appetite for public service. I feel like town government is so important because we are so close to our citizens, and people aren't shy about expressing what they want. I find the debate and the discussion lively and very, very interesting. I'm always glad to hear what people have to say. And I really am committed to making Franklin a wonderful, wonderful place. It already is a wonderful place to live. I want to make it better and better for all of the people who live here and visit us, and for their children and their grandchildren. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jimbo Ledford. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Running for office just seemed like the next step for me. I'm already well invested in this community with my business and my children. So I hope to just continue to help Franklin move forward in the direction it's already going. And that's it.
Hello, my name is David Culpepper. I was born in Franklin. The reason I'm running and wanting to get involved in local government is for those two kids on the bench right over there. They should be able to grow up in a safe town with lots of opportunities. They shouldn't have to leave after they get their education. They should be able to come back here and live a fruitful life. I'd like to foster an environment in which our youth can avoid the pitfalls that are plaguing rural America today. I'm always actually sure how to do that, but I look forward to getting involved, to get my hands dirty, and trying to find solutions to problems, and keep the momentum that this town has going forward. I think there's a seat change that's been happening for at least the last five years of youth and energy that's really come into the town. I'd like to capitalize on that and help foster that in any way possible to make the town a better place. Thank you.
I'm Bob Scott. I have served on the board for 11 years, and I'm running for my third term as mayor. I'm very proud of the momentum that the town has made in the last three, four, or five years. We've made a great deal of progress, particularly in the field of economic development. Our Main Street is bustling years ago, and it hasn't been that many years ago. We had a lot of empty stores on Main Street. Now you can come downtown at night, you can feel safe, there's a lot of activities. Festivals, we have had great success with festivals. We've got several coming up. Unconfessed. Unconfessed brings something like about 5,000 or 6,000 people. The eclipse was just outstanding. I don't know how to describe the eclipse, except that it was just wonderful, and next year, I will schedule it on the weekend.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I do believe in open government, and I'm proud to say that we've had, I think, one closed meeting since I've been mayor. I feel very strongly in the open meetings and the public records laws, and I will keep working to see if we follow those.
All right, thanks to all our candidates, their opening statements. Now we'll begin the question and answer session. Again, each candidate will have two minutes to answer these questions. And we'll begin on the other end with Bob and Mike the phone as we'll head down the line. As you know, the Niquasi mound has been an issue in recent years. What would you like the town to do with the mound? Would you give a thought?
Well, first off, the mound belongs to the town. It was bought by funds that were raised locally. Actually, my wife was one of them, and to her, some of her friends, they saved the mound by turning in Coca-Cola bottles for deposits. But we did, the town did save the mound. I think that we have a great deal of a different feeling with the tribe now, over the mound, the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians. And I think that we're gonna see some development in the east end of Franklin. But my opinion is, is that the mound should remain in ownership of the town. I think everything will work better that way, but there is a spirit of cooperation, and I have no doubt that whatever the outcome is, it's gonna be for the best for the mound, the Eastern Band, and the town of Franklin.
All right, thank you, Bob. All right, Dana.
Ditto what Mayor Scott just said. The mound belongs to the town. It should remain belonging to the town indefinitely because of the reasons he said about the schoolchildren and the community raising the money. That being said, there's no reason why there shouldn't be cooperation with the Eastern Band to help improve it, the whole area around there. And I think this issue's already advancing forward. I think Councilmember McRae can tell us more about that, but there's an initiative going on right now that is on the right track with this issue.
All right, thank you, Dave. Jimbo?
I think those are both very great answers, and I agree with what I was saying. I don't know enough about the history to say, but I imagine it goes back farther than a group of students who purchased the land less than 100 years ago. I believe the Cherokee Indians recognize that, and they're not trying to take that away from us. I do appreciate the advancement that's been made so far, and think that any effort should be made to cooperate with the Cherokee Indians regarding that piece of property.
All right. Thank you, Jimbo. Barbara?
I've been fortunate to be on a committee with the Cherokees for the last couple of years, looking at ways that we can work together to help develop tourism, educational resources for the community, not only the Niquasi mound, but the Cowee mound and other areas, other remnants of the Cherokee history in our county, and in Swayne County, and in Cherokee. This is going so well. I'm excited that the Cherokee actually are investing half a million dollars in what was the old Danza Auto Building to create a visitor's center that will allow people who come to visit the mound to find out what it's all about. A lot of people see it, and they don't really know what it is, but it has an enormous history that goes back for thousands of years. There was a Revolutionary War battle there, colonial wars, and my time is...
One minute.
One minute, I'll pass up. Oh, that's a lot of time. The question of ownership has really been set aside. I think everybody is pretty happy with the way things are going. We're working together on several resources down there. We're working with Main Street Conservation Trust. They are cleaning up some of the brownfield sites that were polluted with gasoline products, oil products. So we're gonna have some beautiful areas down there, very park-like, and the mound will be an important part of that.
The Indian mound is a special part of our community. The town should maintain stewardship of it, and access to it shouldn't be restricted. People don't generally climb up on it. I don't know if I've ever seen people up on it. But, that being said, if the Cherokee Nation wants to help us mow it or maintain it, I think that we should be very open to that. It would save us resources, as well as foster a relationship with them where they feel like the mound is being maintained in an appropriate way. I'm really sad that over the years, that this issue has become so volatile, because the mound was part of Cherokee history, and then, somewhere along the line, when the children in Franklin helped save it, it became part of Franklin's history. And I think one of the reasons that that happened was because a lot of the local people here are Cherokee. They have a grandparent, a great-grandparent, and it's not something they're ashamed of. In fact, anyone that I've talked to is proud of their Cherokee heritage. They are happy to call themselves part Cherokee. And the mound isn't the Cherokees or the town of Franklin. The mound is ours. It's all of ours. And I'm really excited to see what comes out of this investment through Cherokee and other private entities in that area. As long as the town is not financially supporting it, I don't think that that's their place as a local government. Thank you.
All right, thanks, and we'll start again. Hold the mic. Next question, traffic pattern. It's been discussed a lot now with the bridge construction. There's been a lot of conjecture about traffic through downtown. What do you think the town can do to improve traffic through downtown?
Well, is this specifically about the bridge area, or downtown?
Downtown, and also with the bridge construction going. Thanks, Kevin.
Well, I think the very first thing that has to be said is that Main Street is a North Carolina state road. It is not a town road, and so ultimately, those decisions lie with the Department of Transportation for the state of North Carolina. The bridge construction is not being done by the town of Franklin. It's being done by North Carolina DOT. The slowdowns there are terrible. I really, truly hope that our staff here at the town of Franklin has been keeping in touch with DOT about what can be done in terms of minimizing delays. It's the squeaky wheel that gets the grease. But in terms of Main Street coming down this way, there have been studies done for the last 10 years. I helped do ones when I worked for the town of Franklin. They've paid for parking studies at least twice in the last 10 years. There's really not anything that we can specifically do to change the parking or to change the traffic flow that would improve traffic down Main Street. In fact, I lived through here. I drive down Main Street pretty much every day, and I've never felt like that this was specifically a traffic issue. If anything, the businesses along Main Street, Iowa Street, Palmer Street certainly enjoy the slow pace and lazy driving down these roads. It's always good for business to have lots of customers coming down the road for you. So I think that we're actually in a good place with this, and I don't think we should spend any more resources redoing the same studies over and over and over again. Thank you.
I agree with some of your remarks, Angela. I don't think we have a traffic problem so much on Main Street. We have a parking problem, perhaps. Part of that is that some of the vehicles stick out into the driving lane, and it's very awkward getting around them. We've had these parking studies done. We now have a town engineer, and actually, we are moving ahead with plans to improve the parking. Probably we're going to have parallel parking on one side, change the angle on the other side, which will help prevent that long vehicle sticking out in the driving lane. And it's actually gonna increase the number of parking places, but we have a lot of pedestrians on the street, so for safety reasons, as well as just not wanting people to zip through. You don't want your downtown to be an expressway. Really, it is a place where people should slow down. So I think we're heading in the right direction. I think improved parking will make things a lot better for everybody.
I agree with what Barbara said about the traffic. Downtown, I want it to be a freeway. I'm more on the thought pattern of trying to eliminate parking along Main Street and find somewhere to have more central parking areas, such as a garage, or parking spots somewhere else in town. And make downtown more of a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly environment. Try to get the parking off it, maybe have a bike lane, some more work on sidewalks, stuff of that nature. I would personally like to get the parking out of downtown, and somewhere off of Main Street.
Parallel parking on both sides of the street with landscape islands jutting out in, keep it two lanes, clearly delineated crosswalks, so that it's not dangerous to cross the street with your kids. I'd like to see it closed off more often during festivals, specifically, I think it's Winter Fest, Witcher Wonderland. It'd be nice to have it closed during Witcher Wonderland, as well as Unconfessed, which it already is closed for. And banners, I think we should have banners over Main Street more often. Thank you. Also, one more thing about the Indian mound. Access to it should not be restricted in any kind of way. I am one of the people that takes my kids to the top of it and teach them about it and enjoy it. It should not be off limits. It should be respected, but it also should be enjoyed and used as a teaching device and a historical. Thank you.
I do think the traffic pattern, there is a way to do it differently. We just haven't found it yet, but you can't say that we're not working for it. Right now, we are working in-house. We have an engineer and our planner. They've already started doing different angles of parking. Right now, the prevalent thing, the most promising looks like parallel parking going west, on the, excuse me, on the north side of Main Street, and diagonal parking with a different angle on the left-hand side. But it's one of those things that we actually may be able to just try for a few days and see if it works. We can get some temporary tape, and put it down, and let the public try and see what the public thinks about it. I have a little trouble with parallel parking if it's on the other side of the street, because I'm trying to park on the side where I open my door, and it doesn't work with me. As far as the bridge is concerned, we are keeping in touch. We have been in touch. The traffic down there amazingly is moving pretty smoothly. You may have to wait a minute or two, but I go by there very often, and I really think they thought it out, and it's working. Under the circumstances, it's working very well. The roundabouts, I know there's a lot of criticism of roundabouts, but one of the beautiful things about roundabouts, as opposed to traffic lights...
Say it over with? No, 30 seconds.
Oh, oh, 30 seconds. Is when you stop at the traffic light, you're held up there while nobody's coming the other way. Roundabouts keeps the traffic moving, and actually, I think they're gonna help out a whole lot.
All right, thanks, Bob. What is your opinion on the current business climate? It's been mentioned in some of the opening statements within the town limits, and how can the town board affect it? We'll start with you, Bob.
Well, I think the town board can affect it by doing everything we can to see that our local businesses thrive. Many people don't realize it, but about 69% of all jobs are created in municipalities across the state of North Carolina. This is the lifeblood of any town, is your downtown and the surrounding areas that have the retail businesses, the mom-and-pop stores. And we, as a town board, we're doing everything we can. One of the things that we do with festivals, we bring in these festivals, and you say, where are you spending money? Where are we getting out of it? Increased sales tax revenues. Those revenues, we get to keep those revenues. Now, we do that to Sherwood County, and the county does get to line share out of it. But the sales tax revenues are one of your main sources of revenue for municipality to keep everything working. Your streets pay, your sidewalks pay, your police, your fire, all of those services that we provide for everybody collectively, because people cannot afford to do it as individuals.
I think the business climate downtown is pretty good. People want to be downtown. People want to move businesses downtown. I think the largest obstacle to greater business development in our town and our county is actually our county in overbearing regulations. I'd like to see the town council maybe work with businesses and try to help them navigate some of the regulations. I know the Riverwalk District is something that the town is working toward. I'd like to see that River District overlay as an economic development area where we can actually foster growth and help small businesses. Maybe, the word incubator's coming to my mind, but maybe that's not the right word. Educate people as to what they can do and how they can do it. Oftentimes, as an entrepreneur in this county, you walk into a government office, and you ask for permission to do something, and the answer is automatically no. And they haven't even heard the whole question. That culture needs to change in this town, and in this county, in the state if necessary. We need to be open for business, and we need to help businesspeople, people who want to invest in the community. Help them help us. As Mayor Scott said previously, the more people you have at festivals, the more people you have filling our hotels, the more tax revenue we get, the better our infrastructure can be. Business is good for everybody.
I agree with David on everything you said there. I definitely think that we could be more welcoming to small businesses, and we should, we could educate. Small business is a huge draw in the local economy. I definitely think that we could be more, we could provide environments for businesses to learn how to become a business owner, get out into the workforce, and we could do that by incubating the businesses with downtown or some of these empty shops here, and make sure they're provided with the things they need, like good, you know, basic things like phones, and wireless, and internet, and incubate them and show them how to become a successful part of the community. I think we need to continue to welcome people in. Just to touch back on the parking, I like what Bob said about trying things and seeing if they work. And if they don't work, and they're not that costly, why not try it? You know, move forward. Let's do something. Like I said, we've got so many ideas, and we've paid for these plans and plans, and we've sat on them, put them in the back, and not moved forward on anything.
Same topic.
Sorry about that. That was a good topic. I think that as a downtown, we can just continue to be welcoming to local small businesses. Small businesses, the backbone, tax revenue, festivals. I think we should shut the streets down as much as we can. I think we should be open to festivals, draw in any kind of tax and sales tax that we can. Bring people in, yeah, bring them in, especially for these festivals where they're gonna spend their money and their dough, and they're not gonna draw on all of our resources. Why not?
All right, thanks, Jimbo.
One of the things that concerns me a lot is the lack of housing, and this is a problem that not only Franklin and Macon County have, but all of western North Carolina is suffering from the same thing. I've been told by business owners that they could actually hire more people if there were places for them to live, especially our millennials who are looking for particular types of places to live. We are getting more low-income housing, which is very badly needed. There's a beautiful development that the town was very cooperative with on Sada Road, Indigo, which is getting ready to open. I understand they're already completely full. So on every income level, especially the low income and the middle income, there's a real serious housing problem that I think is affecting economic development in the county. We're trying to do everything that we can to ease that, working with the Southwestern Commission, which is planning a housing summit for the region to look at ways that we can actually do something that will bring the type of housing we need here. We do work with businesses. We are members of the EDC, the Macon County EDC Economic Development Commission, work actively with that. I've been involved with that myself. We were able to help Whitley, Franklin Toobeter Products, when they were developing there. And we have been helpful with other, wherever we can. We don't have the resources, obviously, that a larger town would have. We're really trying, and we really want to make a success of this.
All right, thanks, Bob.
The businesses in Franklin are amazing, but the town's involvement in the business climate is restrictive and even corrupt at times. Every new council is always looking for a way to make their mark, to make a change, or in worst-case scenario, gain advantage for themselves or friends. Every year, more rules and restrictions for both businesses and residences are added. They're made more complex, or maybe they're just made more restrictive. We need to eliminate restrictions, not add them. Laws are only enforced by complaint at this point, so we have many laws on the books that are only enforced against the people who aren't well-connected. And often, neighbors or neighboring businesses don't want to complain for fear of reprisal from either their neighbors or their good old boy system, and rightfully so. This is a major issue. It's one that's swept under the rug. We are not treating our citizens equitably. There are the people who can get their rezoning through easily because they know the right people. There are others who have a strong case for rezoning. Particularly, we see this up near the landfill site. They're not in the town limits, but they are in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, so we zone them. And those residential homes have asked to rezone to commercial and industrial over and over again, so that they can sell their property and move away from the landfill. It's an appropriate area for rezoning, and the town board continually shoots them down. The business climate in Franklin should be left to the free market, and our elected officials and staff should be asking themselves if their decisions are serving justice or something else.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next question. We'll start with you. All right, another hot button issue, the Whitmire property. What would you like the town to do with Whitmire property? Start with you, Angel.
The Whitmire property absolutely should be sold. It would be wise to crunch some numbers and see if we could do better, if we would do better to hang on to it for a couple of years and sell it at a higher price, or if the property tax loss that we're experiencing right now is significant enough that we should simply sell it at whatever price we can get for it. It should be sold. That being said, until it's sold, there is absolutely no reason that it should be chained off and have the bamboo growing in front of it. As long as it is here, it would cost almost nothing to allow the public access. Cut down the bamboo so people can see it. Take the chain off the road so people can drive up there and have a picnic. I'm not talking about investing in anything fancy and any park equipment and anything else. Simply open it to the public. After all, it's the public that owns the Whitmire property. This has gone on for too long, and this is the fruit, the very bad fruit of a board 10 years ago who bought the Whitmire property, wanting to build everything new, and then deciding that they didn't want it there. Deciding to instead build new buildings, and they moved out of the old town hall so the police department can have it. And once the police department saw the new town hall, they wanted a new building too. We are so deep in debt right now because of these types of projects. We have to stop them from happening, and we've gotta clean up our mess from the previous debt debt. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Angel. Barbara?
We have consulted my dad looking at the Whitmire property, and he's going to be looking at it very deeply in conjunction with the board members. I have a lot of ideas about it. I agree that it should be put to use, that the citizens deserve to have, get their money's worth out of that property. I don't think it was a waste of money, whether I would have agreed with the action 10 years ago or not, but I think that property is an asset that the town has that we can use to do something good with, that will help all the citizens, whether it's housing development, a commercial development, something that we do in conjunction with a private partner if we sell it outright. But I think that we need to look at our options. It's not costing us anything, a little bit of tax revenue, but compared with what the possibilities are, we'll never get it back again, and we don't own that. possibilities are, we'll never get it back again, and we don't own many nice pieces of property like that. So I think it's up to us to do something wise with that property, and that's what we're trying to do.
All right, thanks Barbara. Jimbo?
I think the town is moving in the right direction with the land use survey they're doing. I just would like to see some forward progress after that. Whatever they do, whatever they decide, I want to see it moving forward. And until then, I think it should be open to the public. I personally do not think it should be sold. They're not making more land. I think it's a great asset to the town. I think it could tie that into town together beautifully, add some sort of mixed use, whether it's part housing, part park, part whatever, part educational, part something to draw people outside of town, not storefront. I think there's plenty of empty storefronts on that end of town. I think that it should be used as more of a green space personally, but like I said, the whatever land use survey says is the best for this town. I think we should look at that really closely and move forward from there. And until then, we should have it.
All right, that's Jimbo. Dave?
It'd be really pretty watching the sunset from that park right now because it's almost a park except it's off-limits to people. And I for one love the bamboo. Anybody that's taken a child through that bamboo jungle that's up there on the Whitmire property would sit in awe at their kid's faces going through this darkening of the bamboo. If you go to Cherokee, they have a park right in the middle of their river, and the bamboo is a feature. They actually have trails and almost mazes like through their bamboo park. They've taken something that grows rampantly and they turn it into an asset for their community. There's no reason why we couldn't do the same thing. It's been off the tax records for 10 years now. I would like to see more tax revenue, but I don't think that that's a reason to sell it. My fear is that if we did sell it, who are we going to sell it to? Given the track record of the town and the county, we'd probably sell it to a local crony. They would build a metal building complex on it that would be an eyesore anchoring that part of town. And that's not what we need in East Franklin. We don't need more metal building complexes over there. Sunset Park could actually help anchor the residential area behind there that is blighted, give a reason for that redevelopment of that residential area, increase those home values, thus increasing the tax value by building a community park. I don't understand why people are so down on parks and why the idea is berated. Our youth need something to do. Green space should be utilized or should be looked at before a rash decision to sell is made. Thank you.
All right, thanks David. Bob?
Thank you. I would like to mention there was a reason for the chain across the property. There was a safety hazard up there. We didn't want anybody getting hurt. But that is passed now, and so I think it is time that we looked at possibly taking that chain down, and I'm glad you reminded us of it. We'll certainly bring that up. But James Fowler several years ago wrote in the Atlantic Magazine, "The 15 Things That Healthy Towns Have." One of them was breweries. The other was green space and parks. And I tend to lean, I don't know what the board might decide to do, but I tend to lean towards putting that Whitmire property into public use where everybody can enjoy it. They're not making any more green spaces inside the corporate limits of Franklin, and I believe that would be a very good use for it. Whatever we could do, pump courses for bicycles, hiking trails, picnic tables, maybe even a small band shell up there. But anyhow, I don't know what the board's going to do, but I would go along, I'd go along with the board whatever they do. But right at this time, I'm for, in the name of livability of a town, I'm in favor of saving it for green space and public use.
All right, thanks Bob. We'll move on to our next question. What do you think about this river district development, proposed river district development? We'll begin with Bob.
I think the Little Tennessee River coming right through the heart of town has been the most neglected thing that we've ever looked at. I think, but at the same token, it has the greatest potential for turning Franklin into even better town than it is now. I'm beginning to see kayakers, canoeists, walkers along the greenways and wildlife. We really need to capitalize on that river. I think the new brewery that's up there on the banks of the Little Tennessee is only the beginning of what is going to come of that. Our town planner and the town board has looked very closely at the river district overlay, and we definitely need this because we've got a river that any town just about in the United States would give anything to have. We need to utilize it. I remember my old hometown of Greenville-South Carolina, and I came here 50 years ago this month, they had the most polluted river in the southeast, Reedy River. And now Greenville is rated as one of the top towns in the United States or cities, and a lot of that credit goes to what they did along the Reedy River, building bridges and greenways and walkways and parks.
All right, thanks Bob. David?
I'm thrilled that the town is getting to the river party. The people kind of already discovered it and figured it out, and the town's coming on board now. That being said, this is a, this could go either way. The town could completely destroy that side of town by over-regulating it. What happened in Asheville was the result of an unregulated river district where artists flooded to and were pretty much allowed to do whatever they wanted to do in those old buildings. And it grew into probably what made Asheville what it is today, the River Arts District. That's what we want to happen here. We do not want to just overlay a district over our river district and say, this can go here, this can't go here, that use is not good, that use is good. Let's regulate it, and then five years from now, we wonder why nobody came. Why did a business not open? Well, it's because the government got there first and tried to get their hands into it and they messed it up. This should be done carefully with a look toward encouraging business, not funding business. It's not the job of the town, the county, the state, or the federal government to inject money into businesses. That's the job of the private sector. If the government will get out of the way of free enterprise, especially in this river district that we have, we will see it flourish. More businesses will go down there. More people will want to utilize the river, and that's what we want. It will anchor East Franklin.
Okay, thank you David. Jimbo?
I'm just going to say, you know, what these two, Bob and David, said, I believe that's one of the most utilized things in Franklin. Eventually, I'd like to see it go all the way to talking about getting that dam out there. The county knows that it's very important, so it has already talked about putting three new buildings in. Yeah, I think that regulations are important along the river, but I do think that we need to be very careful with the regulations that we put in place. Everything should be relooked at along there, just like a lot of the town laws and ordinances. We need to go and just kind of look at it and say, does this 100-year-old law still make sense today? I would think that most of them probably don't. And there should be, we should protect our river, but we should also attract business. And I do think there's a way to do that. And we just need to start and be steadfast and look at the long-term solution and what we're trying to accomplish here long-term in Franklin. Thank you.
All right, Barbara?
I'm excited about the river district. I think it has a lot of opportunities for the people, for the businesses down there, for our tourists, or people who enjoy just getting out and walking around. I'm down there every day walking and I see people, I've met so many people down there from all over the place. People love rivers. They love to sit out by the new brewery and enjoy themselves in the evening. I love watching them. So I am thrilled that this is happening. I want you all to know, this is not something that we have adopted. It's not like we're slamming restrictions on people. This is a working document. We're looking for public input. People should express themselves, and I hope that they will. And I think that what comes out of this process, that people will get involved, is going to be something great for Franklin. I think we're at the verge of just becoming the most marvelous place that you can imagine. And people are going to want to come here and enjoy our resources, and I'm proud to be a part of that, and I just hope we keep on going. Angela?
Barbara?
The river district, it may have potential if it's used to deregulate the property along the river instead of adding more regulations. The business market should be free trade. Let the economy dictate what goes there. River properties, especially in that area, are extremely expensive. Chances are someone doesn't want to buy one and dump a trailer on it. It's very unlikely that that's going to happen. We really don't need to worry about that type of thing. But something that we could do with the river district that would be amazing and encourage businesses is we could use it to reduce the restrictions on those property, or alternatively, to allow for a different, less restrictive, less paperwork-heavy set of rules if property owners will build further back from the river. For example, to build a structure that's over a certain size in C-2 zoning, which is what most of the Highlands Road is, you need a special use permit, for example, like a shopping center. If instead, they could meet added restrictions to stay back from the river and to have better maybe landscaping for that area or add sidewalk, we could release them from the need of a special use permit. This would lower paperwork, it would lower staff time, and it would give our property owners their rights back, and they wouldn't have to depend on a board vote to see if they can build their shopping center. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next question. Should the town of Franklin have a noise ordinance? We'll begin with you, Angela.
Oh, noise ordinances. Well, I have to say, I strongly think that we should not have a noise ordinance. That being said, we need to be considerate of our neighbors. Noise ordinances, they're extremely difficult to enforce. You have to figure out, how many decibels is that noise? And who's measuring it? And where are they measuring it from? It's complicated. And reality is, the reality is, is right now, we have such an enormous problem with the rules being enforced on the people who are not connected, who are not part of that good old boy system. And everything's left to slide for the people who are well-connected. Or even worse, the rules are changed when they start affecting the people that have those connections. That is what we see happening over and over and over again. And I believe a noise ordinance would just be another opportunity to abuse that, to put the citizens who are poor, who are afraid of reprisals, who do not have connections in the legal system, who do not have the finances to push, to push back, who aren't able to speak up, those people will be the ones who suffer. It will not solve a problem across the town. It will simply create hardship for a limited number of people. Thank you.
All right, Barbara?
The town board members, council members have been pulling their hair over this for years and years and years. It is, as Angela said, very hard to define what noise is. What to some person might be a beautiful rendition of a song might just be noise to somebody else, and you have to measure decibels and all that. So it is very hard to define. We've talked about doing an ordinance. There doesn't seem to be a great public outcry for a noise ordinance. I haven't, I don't get a lot of complaints from people about noise. Occasionally, something happens. I don't believe in just having a lot of rules if you don't really have a need for the rules. So we'll probably just keep muddling along on this one unless it becomes a real problem and it's become something that we really, truly have to do something about. And then we'll work with our lawyer and find out what other communities have been able to do, to have a law that will stand up in court and that can be easily enforced and that sort of thing. It sounds easy, but sometimes these things are a lot harder when you actually start putting pen to paper than you think they're going to be.
All right, thanks Barbara. Jimbo?
I don't believe the town should have a noise ordinance for the same reasons they said. It's very hard to define noise. One person may think something's beautiful, another person may not. I think that we need to show each other common courtesy, and maybe the town can have a phone number where you can call, and the town, the local town can say, "Did you try to go on this video?" Asking them politely to turn the music down. And then if they had to try that already, then maybe it could progress from there. But surely there's other ways to solve problems than putting more laws and rules. They're just going to make it harder for people to live.
All right, David?
I don't think a noise, excuse me, I don't think a noise ordinance would be the worst use of government power. I generally err on the side of less regulation, but I've been on the receiving end of music late at night while I was trying to sleep. And it's annoying. And that being said, I mean, a common sense noise ordinance wouldn't be difficult to generate. You can copy the boilerplate language from another town bar, similar demographic, and it would need to make sense. I mean, obviously, you need to have certain hours, 1:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the morning. I don't think there's a need for anybody to be having very loud stereo music, and I think that could be relatively easily enforced, maybe with a decibel meter or something like that. I think it's a pretty harmless ordinance in the whole scheme of things.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I'm going to pass a sheet of paper down for your numbers. I'm going to give them to who calls me at 1:00 in the morning. And I'm just delighted to pass that along. Most noise problems are complaint-driven, and yeah, what is noise to someone may be music to somebody else, but that somebody else is also having their rights invaded by something. So I do think there are ways that we can handle this. I think decibel meters and making it time constraints so when you can have that much decibels going out. I think it's a doable ordinance if we decide to move it on. If the board, it's the board that comes up with ordinances. And we've certainly looked at many, many towns, and the prevalent noise ordinances that are out there now involve decibel meters and time of night that the noise is generated and the type of noise.
All right, thank you Bob. All right, we'll move on to our next question. So much of the town and county operations overlap, such as the greenway. How can you better improve the relationship between the town and the county? We'll begin with you, Bob.
Well, I don't, you know, it's hard to say because they're two different entities. Now, we get along fine, that's no problem. I think one of the problems might be that, I think right now would be a great time for the town and the county to come up with a mutual project where we can work together on it. I don't know what it would be, but the county has its problems, the town has its problems. There are certain services the county has to render because it's not in the state laws for the towns to do it. So overall, I think that we get along real well. This is not uncommon across the state for sometimes counties and towns to bump up against each other a little bit when it comes to services. But yeah, there is some overlap, and I'll be the first to admit there's overlap, but there's also the historical function of both and how you accomplish the best way to serve the people that you're serving.
Thanks Bob. David?
There is overlap. I think some of the overlap should be cut, and some of the budget savings should be used to fund things that are being neglected like the greenway. Everybody uses it, nobody wants to pay for it. That's it.
All right, Jimbo?
I believe that the rules of the town affect people in the town, and the rules of the county affect people in the town. And so I think that all these bridges need to be bridged and try to be worked through with cooperation between the town and the county and the ones being affected. I think it's, it should be easy. The biggest problem is probably the government that gets in the way, and I think there's probably ways around that. Everybody that I've worked with from the town and the county were very happy to work together, and I think that the government's probably the biggest problem with getting things done. I think there's ways around that. If we are willing to work with one another and try to cooperate, I think that we could get amazing things done.
Thanks, Jimbo. Barbara?
Well, we do work with the county in a lot of ways. I mentioned the Economic Development Commission before. We're participants on that. We're participants on many of the committees that the county has, so we have input there. I feel like the door of the county manager and the commissioners is always open to us. I don't feel any problem going and talking to them. I don't feel any problem going and talking to them if something comes up that I think we could both work on together. We have to be aware that people in town are paying double taxes, and so, we want to give our citizens that something extra so they feel like they are getting good value for what they spend. And, so that precludes us often from taking a role in things that are basically county functions. For example, the schools are county functions, the greenway is a county park. So there is a limited number of things, there are things that we can do with some of these programs. But where we can cooperate, we do now, and I think we should do everything we can to make that better.
All right, thanks Barbara. Angela?
The town and the county have a good working relationship, and that's a good thing. The reality is, is for the majority of the people in the county, they use Franklin. And for everyone in Franklin, it's a little bit of a different story. We are residents of the county, we pay county taxes. For those of us who live in Franklin, we can think of the Town of Franklin as a value-added service. We are paying twice as much in taxes for the added service that the town of Franklin give us. So, when the county and the town do work together, as town officials, I think that it is critical that the scale be weighed, is this to the distinct advantage of the people of Franklin, of the people and the businesses that live here and pay taxes here? Not, is this good for everyone? That's a hard thing to do, because for the most part, in this area, everyone who's in Kawi, in Otto, in Kartuja, they all are from Franklin. But, they are not citizens of the Town of Franklin, they do not pay taxes. Maybe some of them have businesses that pay taxes. But, those partnerships with the county must absolutely serve the people in Franklin. That's businesses and residents. We must serve them and serve them first, and our decision-making has to be based on whether or not it will serve the property owners here, not in the county as a whole. Thank you.
All right, Angela. Thank you. Should have mentioned this when we started, the questions that we're asking tonight were submitted by citizens to Dave, and we've got a couple left, we've got about 10 minutes left in the forum. This is a long one, it's a little complicated, so bear with me. If elected, what would you do with the TDA? Would you continue the program like it is, or would you request the council to look into dissolving it and starting over, making it a part of town council? And if you started it over, would you set up amount of funds that are given out? We'll start with you, Angela.
Okay, this is a completely moot question. The TDA gets the money from the occupancy tax for the Town of Franklin. They made a decision, I think it was about nine years ago, to collect an occupancy tax that was specific to the Town of Franklin, because only so much occupancy tax can be collected for any one location. That money then must be given to a tourism development authority. It is not a choice, it must be given to them. And then, that money is spent by them. The Tourism Development Authority must have representatives that are involved in tourism for that locale. So, this is a, this is a really, you know, kind of unique pool of money. I often speak out against spending money on programs and festivals and those types of things. But, for the TDA to spend money on those would be a great thing. That money is collected from people who come to Franklin and visit Franklin for the sole purpose of helping more people come to Franklin and stay in Franklin. We had 100% support when that decision was made, I was an employee at the town, we had to send out a letter to every single overnight business that had people stay the night in the entire Town of Franklin. And we got 100% positive response from them. They all wanted this occupancy tax to help draw more business to their businesses. So, we don't have a choice about putting the TDA into the town council or having them have a set budget. They get what the occupancy tax gives them, period.
All right, thanks Angela. Barbara?
That is so. The authority is set up as an authority, and we, the only, the only authority the town council has over it is in who serves on that board. We do have the opportunity to appoint those people. But once they're on the TDA, then they have authority over those funds, and there are regulations that say what the funds can be used for. The only way we could change it, I think we'd have to ask for a private bill and get one of our representatives to introduce it. And of course, sometimes we think, why did they do that? We wish they would do this, we'd like them to spend the money this way. But it is a board that's constituted that way, it is their authority, and it is their right to do it. So, we've talked about ways that possibly it could be changed. The county's set up differently, it is a TDC or a Tourism Development Commission, and it doesn't have the type of authority that a TDA does. So, it's a little bit complicated, and we might consider trying to make some changes down the road that would perhaps use the funds in a different way, like for festivals. Right now, it's all used for marketing expenses.
Thanks Barbara. Jipper?
Well, I now know more about the TDA than I ever have, and before I make a statement on anything, I like to gather as much information as possible, so.
If you build it, they will come. There's a lot of focus on tourists and recruiting tourists, it's like, if we just tell more people about our town, more people will come as tourists. Like, I think that's the wrong approach. Well, I mean, Franklin's awesome, if we continue to invest in infrastructure here, we'll recruit professional people to move here. That citizen involvement will help make the town even better, and then that's what creates an actual nucleus of a town, is citizen involvement. I mean, a TDA, or an EBC, or an ABC, or any of this stuff that this town and the county spend money on frequently, trying to recruit people, I think mostly falls on deaf ears. Invest in the town, make the town your priority, make the citizenry your priority. Provide them with a place where they want to live, and they'll tell their friends, and people will find us. You don't have to keep needling people and saying, "Come here, come here, come here." People want to be here. They love this town, they're looking for a reason to move here. Invest in infrastructure so that more professional people can come here, more jobs will be created, and we'll have a better citizenry base, not just a better tourist base.
All right, thanks Dave. Bob?
Dave, you're absolutely right, I agree 100%. One of the things that came out of the eclipse, I talked to a lot of people, I talked to some people from Venezuela, Russia, a family that drove all the way from California here, and without exception, every one of the people I talked to said they're coming back to Franklin. Now then, do the tourists take a toll on your infrastructure? Here's what I would like to see, I would like to see the state, and there is a statewide movement right now to allow these funds that are being developed right now through the occupancy tax, allowing local governments to use some of those funds for infrastructure improvement. If you've got streets that people break away or sidewalk walking down, you're not going to get that person back as a tourist again. We also have several organizations in this town that are nonprofit, that are suffering for lack of funding. Tourist Development Authority funds can be, right now, used for some capital improvements, and this is something we need to look at. Which one of our businesses that are nonprofit right now that draw tourists, what can we do to strengthen them? That is one of the things I think we need to look at. We might need to get a local bill, I don't know, I haven't talked to either of our representatives in Raleigh yet, but I can tell you that statewide, statewide towns across the state that have TDAs are looking for ways to change the structure of where that money can be spent.
All right, thanks Bob. And we're going to give our candidates an opportunity to provide their closing statement as to why they should be elected. And Bob, begin with you.
Well, I think you have to realize that sometimes regulations and ordinances are not really agreeable, but if you don't have them, you've got total anarchy. If you don't have some regulations, if you don't stop people from building in a flood plain, who pays that cost? Regulations and ordinances are necessary for an orderly town. And I would just say that I don't think that you need an ordinance, just an ordinance, but you have to look at it very carefully. Also, we have planning boards, tourist development authorities, we have the ABC boards, and we have these because that spreads the authority out into the community of how things get done in a town. You can't do it with just six board members and a mayor. You've got to have that base of people who are interested in the town, all working together, volunteering, doing all these festivals, that is what Franklin's all about. And I would disagree about this business of, well, we need, need less and less and less regulations. We probably didn't need a few less ones, but you've also got to have the ones we have now. The other thing is, I don't like to hear, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. My philosophy is, if it ain't broke, maybe we need to be looking at fixing it. Because sometimes I think we can go too long without reevaluating the regulations and ordinances we have now.
All right, thanks Bob. David, your closing statement.
I'm going to vote for you for mayor, Bob. Yeah, don't misinterpret me about the ABC board, I was just pulling names out of there. No, I do think committees are a good way to get opinions together, as long as they're not homogeneous groups of people who all think alike, you need dissent within groups, we need a town council that does not think alike, we need people who have different ideas to sit and deliberate and make decisions. We don't want things shoved through, we don't want cronyism, we don't want fascism, we want deliberate thought put behind decisions. That being said, I don't think there's a bad person running for this town council. I think any of the three that you cast your vote for out of the six, we're all here for the right reasons, we're all going to do our best and strive to put Franklin first. The only way that we differ is in the details of how we see making Franklin a better place. Thank you.
All right, Jipper, your closing statement.
Thank you everybody for coming, thank you for listening to me tonight. I do agree that some ordinances are important, we don't want people dumping toxic waste into the river, things of that nature. I think it's probably a paces to go on the sidewalk in these days, I don't want to see somebody getting ticket for that. I think that, nobody asked me about jobs, but I think the jobs that Franklin needs are here. I think that we need to focus on our trades and our skilled laborers, I think that we have the places here to do that, we can form some cooperations with the local community colleges, some of these empty buildings around here. I think that we should focus on our people. Like David said, I think that's the best commodity we have here. As a town councilman, I will be always available, and I will be a voice for the people. My answer will not be why, but it will be why not? Why not try new things if it's not going to cost the town a fortune and if it's going to make me move forward? Why not try it? I am going to continue to be a part of this community, I'm going to continue to support all the kids sports, I'm going to continue to support fundraisers, I'm going to continue to be a part of this community, and if I do get your vote, I appreciate it.
All right, Barbara, your closing statements.
Well, I hope you'll vote for me, I would like a chance to continue for the next four years to work on the various projects I've been involved with and to see some of them come to fruition, making our town a really more wonderful place, helping our citizens live better lives, have a more beautiful setting, have more things to do, more opportunities. I'm especially interested in housing, as I mentioned, I'm interested in sidewalks, in pedestrian safety, I'm interested in trees, and just, I like, like, look around you, what a beautiful setting we have here in the middle of town. I'd like to see our neighborhoods look prettier and more welcoming, and I want to continue the open government that we have, I think that's truly important. I think Franklin is scrupulous on the subject of open government. I do not see the cronyism and the corruption that some have mentioned here. My experience with the town has been very positive, and I feel extremely proud of all of our employees.
All right, thanks Barbara. Angela, your closing statement.
Whether you vote for me or not, I'm happy to fight for you. If you have a complaint, if you know someone's breaking the rules, call me, contact me. I don't care if I'm elected, I will go fight for you. It's what I like to do, I enjoy reading the rules, I enjoy learning about the law so that I can try to help make it better. I can do that to some extent as simply a citizen, but as an elected official, it would give me a much better opportunity to serve you and to serve the people of this community. So often, I sit in board meetings and I hear the debate, and I know that there is maybe a lack of understanding or maybe some forgetfulness of the laws that are on the books, or what is actually there. And decisions are made based on things that are inaccurate, but I can't speak up, because as a citizen, I can speak during a brief public session at the beginning. I want to be a part of those meetings, I want to be a part of those debates. I want to help keep our expenses low while keeping our infrastructure taken care of, I want to tackle our debt, I want to read our budget in detail, I want to go through it all. I do these things already, but it is so hard to have a voice when you can't be part of the conversation. Please vote for me, I really want to see change, and I really want to see our board really get into the nitty-gritty of the day-to-day stuff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that's been our forum tonight, we did have one candidate that could not make it tonight, but thanks to, two, we had two, okay, sorry, we had two that couldn't make it tonight. But thanks to all of our candidates for Franklin Town Board, and hopefully, they informed you tonight, and of course, go vote in November. Thanks.